Being seven o'clock, we're calling the main order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospas.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Lynn.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We'd ask those with cell phones if they would please put them on vibrate or silence them by turning them off, we would appreciate it. Item number one is the swearing-in of new police officers, Scott Hazelwinkle and Anthony Laxen-- Laxenan?
Laxenan.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would call forth Police Chief Riley to introduce our two newest officers and conduct the swearing-in.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we're going to swear in our two newest officers, and this brings our department up to full staff for the first time in actually a couple of years. So we hope they're not going anywhere and they'll be with us for a long time. Both of these officers are graduates of the LSSU Law Enforcement Program and the Police Academy. Scott comes from, originally from the area of Cedar Springs. Got that off your application. And Anthony is actually from the Sioux. His family is from the Sioux. We welcome them both. They're going to be fine additions to our department. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the city clerk, Robin Troyer, so they can take their oath of office.
I'll have you raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of police officer in and for the city of Sioux-St. Marie, county of Chippewa, state of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities.
I do.
And now I'll administer the oath of honor. Raise your right hands. On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and have others accountable for my actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve.
I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Sioux.
Good luck. Congratulations.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, second item is the Second Quarter Customer Service Award going to Jeff Killips. City manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and community. If I could please have Jeff Killips join me up here. At his January 18th, 2016, regular meeting, the Sioux-St. Marie City Commission adopted a citizen service philosophy. This service philosophy calls on all employees to take ownership in being positive ambassadors for the city government and the community, to be mindful that first impressions or chance encounters can define the identity of the city and even encourage guests or others to move to or invest in the community, and to strive for excellence in service standards at all times. This service philosophy also states that an emphasis is to be placed on teamwork, a commitment to coworkers, and a prudent management of community resources. At the time of the adoption of this philosophy, the city commission requested that city administration develop a means to publicly thank and recognize those employees whose actions reflect and embody the citizen service philosophy. Accordingly, city administration developed a process whereby employees are nominated by their peers for excellence in service. These nominations are reviewed by an internal committee meeting quarterly, which forwards recommendations to the city manager. I am pleased to announce that Department of Public Works head meterman Jeff Killips has earned the exemplary citizen service award for the second quarter of 2017. Jeff was hired on March 20th, 1989 into the Parks Department and has since also worked in the Streets Department, Street Department, as well as the Water and Sewer Department. As head meterman, his duties include the installation, repair, and monitoring of water meters, and closely engaging with citizens, meeting their needs. Jeff is conscientious in the completion of his duties, attentive to the needs of citizens, has strong follow-up, and embraces a lead-by-example approach to his work. Jeff also enjoys hockey and has been a tireless advocate for the Puller Community Building and Kane's Rink, a prized facility to which he has devoted significant time and a facility that has been improved significantly because of his efforts. We thank him for his diligent work ethic that ultimately improves the quality of life for all citizens, and just appreciate Jeff's commitment to the city, certainly an individual I have very high respect and regard for. Again, I'm pleased to recognize Jeff for earning this award, and we thank him for his commitment to the citizen service philosophy. And here I have in front of me the award certificate signed by myself and Mayor Bospas. Congratulations, Jeff.
Item number three, public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item?
Yes, sir.
If you'd like to identify yourself for the record, Rick.
I'm Rick Clare.
And you know what item that is?
Uh, visitor's.
That would be 5A. Okay? Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item number four, the consent agenda. Deputy City Manager, Troyer.
A minute approval. One, approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of July 17th, 2017. Recommended action is to approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of July 17th, 2017. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. A, Board of Review of July 18th. B, Historic Structures Management Committee of June 28th. C, Historic Structures Management Committee Meeting of July 26th. D, Planning Commission of June 22nd. N, E, Zoning Board of Appeals of July 20th. Recommended action is to accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. Item B, Communications. One, from the Michigan Municipal League, designation of delegates for the annual business meeting. Recommended action is to designate Mayor Tony Bospas as delegate, and Mayor Pro Tem Don Gary as alternate delegate to the annual MML convention. Item two under Communications is from Community Action Agency, approval of a resolution for charitable gaming license. Recommended action, approve a resolution for the Michigan Lottery recognizing the CLM Community Action Agency as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Item C, City Managers Report. One, award of a contract for pavement markings on West Easterday Avenue. Recommended action is to award a contract to PK Contracting in the amount of $11,059.60 for pavement markings on West Easterday Avenue. Item two under City Managers Report is approve a non-exclusive private use agreement for unimproved East 22nd Street right-of-way. Recommended action is to approve the non-exclusive private use agreement for unimproved public right-of-way with McCoy and Skonitzky LLC for the portion of East 22nd Street right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that would like the, something further explained on the consent agenda? Otherwise, Commissioner Twardy.
I so move that we approve the consent agenda.
Supporter. So I move to support it. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospas.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion approved, thank you.
Item five, Special Orders of Business. A, second reading of an ordinance pertaining to a request submitted by Larry Bitner to conditionally rezone approximately 2.17 acres of land generally located at 900 East Spruce Street from R2 to I1, A as public comments and B as action on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. And then we would, maybe after the explanation, we'll go to Mr. Rick Clare.
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, Community Development Director Freeman is presenting to the city commission and community.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Evening, Kelly.
So, just an update, nuisance first reading. It was included in your packet. On July 25th, the city clerk's office received a letter from a concerned neighbor which included with it a copy of the petition which was included with your packet for first reading. Additionally, the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting minutes were included with your packet this meeting, so you could see what the discussion was at that meeting. So the property in question is located at the far east end of Easterday Avenue, on the south side of Easterday, kind of where it turns north into Ord and continues east as Spruce. There's kind of four, or three areas, I should say. The orange parcels are parcels that are owned by Mr. Bitner and are included in the rezoning request. The green parcels are owned by American Transmission Company, and they're included in this request. ATC has indicated no objection to the rezoning. And the parcels in yellow are also owned by Mr. Bitner. They are R2 presently and are not supposed to be changed as part of this request. Here's an excerpt of the zoning map. You can see, generally speaking, it's residential to the east, industrial to the north, residential and industrial mixed to the south and west. So these are the parcels under consideration from the conditional rezoning. So this is our first conditional rezoning, as far as I'm aware, and that's provided for in the Zoning Enabling Act, and basically allows an applicant to approach the city and willingly offer concessions as a means to address any possible intensity compatibility issues with what they would like to do with the property versus what might be more compatible with the surrounding land uses, in this case residential. So there's kind of three different areas of the property, so I'll walk through the history of those real quick. First is the former residential parcel, which is at the far southwest corner. It's the only part of the site which has been known to be used for residential purposes. Up until the mid-'80s, there were three or four homes on the parcel. You can see here, this is the 1954 aerial. This is the 1986 aerial, which was shortly after the Jacobs family acquired the parcel. And it was R2 when it was acquired by the Jacobs, so there shouldn't be a whole lot of business activity occurring on it. The ATC parcels were actually originally the rail spur that ran to Union Carbide and out, as well as to the lime piles. So all of the raw materials going into the plant went through there, as well as all the waste materials coming out. You can see the 54 aerial here showing roughly the location of the railroad tracks in that part of town at the time, and the area in question is in a square right down here. Here's kind of a closer look. Obviously, after Union Carbide's closure, that land was converted into space for the power lines. I'm not quite sure when, but they were power lines in '75, so it's been used in that manner for quite some time. So these are the Jacobs parcels, which were the historic Jacobs junkyard. Looking down at the records in the basement, it looks like it was established sometime between 1920, 1925. At least that's when the Jacobs name started showing up in the ownership records. We really don't have a whole lot of information on the early operations, but once we get into some more, more recent data from the '40s, it shows the property being a junkyard. And our 54 aerials, which are the oldest that we have in our inventory, show a very well-used junkyard at that point. Here are some photos through time, just to kind of see what other property had been used. The Jacobs operation ceased in 1994, so this was taken two years before. And then, as you can see, in the intervening years, things just kind of started to grow over. This property was on the blight list at one point. So this is the pre-1965 zoning map, which shows the area in question, as well as really the whole south side of Easterday, at least west of the subject property as being industrial. And the way that the zoning worked at the time is it was what's called a pyramid zoning. So as you go higher on the pyramid, you are allowing everything that's less intense. So by the time you get to the industrial district, which is the purple, you can do any kind of residential use or commercial use. So it's basically free range, which is why in this area, as well as the west end of the island, you have single-family, commercial, and industrial all mixed together. Needless to say, communities don't do that anymore because it turned out to be a pretty bad idea for your operating principle. So the property was rezoned by city action to R2 in 1965. That came with the adoption of the new zoning ordinance. There were new designations put in place at the time, so the previous ABC went away, and it was replaced with the R, the B, and the I that we know today. So the entire city was rezoned in that one swoop. And it's not known exactly how much attention was paid to specific areas of the city, this area included. Obviously, back in the '60s, environmental considerations were held in a different regard than they are today, and we know better than to dump oil on the ground, or burn junk cars, or a lot of the other things that were commonplace back then. But given what was known at the time, it was a very sensible action. Even though the property was rezoned to residential, the junkyard was allowed to stay there. When a use is established, it needs to be legal for obvious reasons, but if the zoning is changed down the road, they can remain there. Grandfathering, and is the popular term for that. However, the zoning ordinance provides that once that use is discontinued for 30 days, what replaces it has to conform with the zoning in place at the time. So whenever Jacobs closed in 1994, plus 30 days, was when whatever went back there had to conform to the R2 zoning requirements. So in 2015, Mr. Bitner purchased a property from the Jacobs family. He did his due diligence, but based on the tax classification of the properties, which was commercial, I believe that he made the assumption that that meant that there was a corresponding zoning designation of commercial as well, which was not the case. And it was only after he closed on it that that came to light. As the property was purchased with the intention of becoming the new home for his construction and contractor's office, that presented an issue for him, because that kind of use is not permitted in R2. In May of 2015, Mr. Bitner was granted a use variance specifically for that use on that property. And with that approval, he went through the site plan review process and constructed the buildings that are out there today. So fast forward to March of this year, the city manager's office received a noise complaint that there was a diesel shop operating on the property. And because the zoning board action was very specific to the building contractor's office and storage yard use, anything that fell outside of that umbrella would not be considered legal. So staff went and looked at the property, and sure enough, there was a diesel repair business operating. I reached out to Mr. Bitner and set about making things right. He was given a few options. First of all was to discontinue the diesel repair shop, return to the Zoning Board of Appeals to request an expansion of his use variance, or to seek the rezoning of the property. He went to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That occurred in April of this year. He asked for three things: the diesel repair business, the ability to rent storage space in his buildings, as well as rent the small front office to like a retailer or some kind of small office use. The rentals of storage space and the office retail uses were approved by the zoning board. However, the diesel repair business was deferred to the next meeting. They wanted to see if they could potentially give him like a 12-month trial period to see how it would work out. In consultation with city attorney Canelo, he recommended against it simply because once you grant somebody a property right, it's awfully hard to take it away. And he was looking at potentially spending a significant amount of money to make alterations to the building, and we didn't want to put ourselves in a position where he had to lay out $30,000 or more, and then us come around a year later and say, guess what, that's not going to work out. So the staff recommendation was to deny the request, which is what the zoning board did at the time. So this is Mr. Bitner's last administrative remedy to continue to use the property for those purposes. Now, we all know junkyards have a bit of a history, and indeed, we found that to be the case with this property. Paul from Accra Environmental is here in case there's any environmental questions. He was the one that did the fieldwork for Mr. Bitner. There were seven soil samples taken at various locations on the property. You can see them in the overhead here. There were several instances of exceedances from the MDQ standards. You can see all the different cornucopia of things that was found there. The SB1, which is the residential parcels on the far, see to be the northeast corner, were fairly clean. However, SB6, which is the area closest to the tracks, that was the worst-looking one. And I believe the lead figure there was 10 times the residential contact criteria. There were some remediation activities performed by the applicant, but based upon my discussions with the environmental consultant, residential is not an appropriate use for this property, even under the best of circumstances. I believe at the Planning Commission meeting, and he can expound further if he chooses, it'd be about a six-figure cleanup bill to put things right. And of course, given where the property's at, its surroundings, the fact that there's power lines through it, the lime piles are right behind it, it really wouldn't be a wise financial endeavor to undertake. So as far as assessing the rezoning, I looked to the master plan, but there's really not a whole lot of guidance it provides. As you'd expect, it shows residential for the future land use of this property. There is some discussion of contamination, but it's more like underground storage tanks and gas stations. The zoning ordinance in the preamble, I did find that, you know, the purpose of the zoning ordinance, among other things, is to promote and protect the public health, and that being listed first, I took as the number-one priority of the zoning ordinance. And obviously, having contamination is a major public health issue, so that's kind of where I took my overall guidance first. So throughout the zoning board process, there were comments both for and against. People were concerned about the noise and the traffic being disruptive to the peaceful environment enjoyment of their properties. However, others said that Burton's Yard and our DPW Yard created more noise. Easterday's a truck route, so you can expect some traffic and associated noise with that. And a property that was once a major eyesore for decades is now much better looking than it has been in many, many years. So that said, my analysis of the rezoning request is going to focus on two things. First of all, answering the question, is the designation that's presently assigned appropriate? And two, if it's not appropriate, what is an appropriate designation to assign? So clearly, based upon the environmental findings, I couldn't conclude that residential was an appropriate use there. In fact, 50 years of residential zoning on the parcel has only seen houses demolished, nothing built. As I mentioned before, there's not a whole lot of attractive features about this property that would lend to somebody wanting to live there. So no residential districts are appropriate. On the flip side, intensity-wise, I2 is not an appropriate designation here. That's our most intense industrial district. Looking through the others, P1 and Marine Services are not applicable since they're very highly specialized. B2 is geared more toward the downtown. Tourist is our tourist areas, which this area's not. And that really leaves us four left: Office Service, B1, B3, and I1. The Office Service District is kind of our least intense office-type use, as things like banks, clinics. These are going to be uses like residential that will be sensitive to contamination on the property, so I didn't think that was quite appropriate. B1 is kind of like your small mom-and-pop type businesses that service the local neighborhood. Not really a place where something like that would thrive, in my own humble opinion. B3 is your large-scale retail auto repair, things that generate traffic, like you'd see on the business spur. So that really leaves us with I1. It's primarily manufacturing uses, things like warehousing, storage, trucking, and transfer, as well as building contractor's office and storage yard. However, manufacturing kind of things is not appropriate for this location, given the proximity to residential. And as part of his conditional rezoning, Mr. Bitner has voluntarily taken those manufacturing uses off the table, leaving most everything in the I1 district fair game. Obviously, the included ordinance in the packet goes into more detail there. For most of the I1 businesses, they need to be conducted in an enclosed building or in an area that's screened with a minimum six-foot-tall fence. Mr. Bitner has a fence encompassing most of the property already, so he's in fairly good shape in that respect. In addition, the B3 uses are also permitted in I1, so we went through those as well and struck off things like funeral homes, car washes, adult uses, apartment complexes, et cetera. Things that are retained in the B3, wholesale and retail activities, auto sales, auto repair, bus stations, so on and so forth. There are a few uses subject to additional conditions. That's outdoor sales of cars, and then self-storage facilities. Those are all laid out in the ordinance, which is provided. So basically, in my own mind, this conditional rezoning strikes the best balance between allowing Mr. Bitner some economic freedom to use the property that he's developed, as well as protecting the interests of the neighborhood to keep things too intense from happening there. Just go back through the Planning Commission happenings. That meeting was on June 22nd. It was an eight-to-zero vote to recommend approval of the request, which consisted with my recommendation. So the recommendation is to, tonight, is to receive public comment and approve the ordinance to conditionally rezone the property as presented.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that presentation, Mr. Freeman. One of the discussions that I've had with Mr. Freeman about the presentation is how well-organized and detailed it is. And I think that the presentation itself reflects that any time a rezoning is considered by a municipality, it undergoes a deliberative process, and it relies upon technical standards as well as findings of fact. And I certainly, when I look at this type of situation, considering the legacy of the property, that it was formerly industrial, and past residential uses have failed or not sustained, that the environmental exceedances limit the current uses, making the property not appropriate for residential uses, as well as the surrounding conditions, compels me in a recommendation in favor of adopting the ordinance. And I do agree that the conditional rezoning, it does strike the correct balance between ensuring the economic utilization of the property and fulfilling the aims of the master plan in harmony with the neighborhood, and trying to preserve that area for the future, and containing or curtailing more intensive uses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, since it is a public comment time, anyone wishing to speak on the item can go ahead and raise their hand, and we'll acknowledge that and come to the mic. So, Mr. Clare, if you'd like to start, if anyone else would like to after that, we would certainly encourage you to. If you'd identify yourself for the record.
My name's Rick Clare. I live two houses to the west. I've lived there for over 40 years. I've listened to Burton's, city employees banging buckets behind me, truck routes when they used to have the gas tanks down here on Portage. Mr. Bitner's probably the quietest one over 40 years living down there. He's cleaned the area up, I mean, really, really nice, spent a lot of money on it, and I have absolutely no objections to living there. I mean, he's just a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we will close the public comment. City Commission, Commissioner Baker.
Kelly, with the rezoning for the west half of it, I guess, and then the east side, Mr. Bitner's planning on putting apartments, is that the idea as of right now?
It'd be a pair of duplexes adjacent to Spruce.
So where the spore count was at, a one?
The closest boring to that area did not find any exceedances. That was in the yellow.
So the yellow's going to stay residential?
That's correct.
But that's not where, I'm trying to look at the, where the testing went down. In addition to that, so that won't affect the resident, like, it's okay for housing on that end of it, just not on the west end of it?
Paul can speak more to that if he likes, but my understanding is that's a safe. Paul can speak more to that if he likes, but my understanding is that's a safe location for residential.
Okay.
Commissioner Lynn.
Your Honor, I would so move the city commission approve and adopt the conditional rezoning ordinance as presented for Mr. Bitner.
Support. Support. Are there any additional questions? Commissioner Bauer.
I was, I'd just like to say that with the petition and everything, I'm kind of surprised that no one who signed that petition is here today, because if they wanted to present an argument against Mr. Bitner, this would actually be the appropriate time to do so. And I sat on the zoning board of appeals for several years before I was on the commission, and the one thing that I've always said, that I've said as a commissioner, is that the zoning regulations are basically a contract between the city and the neighborhood, where, and the neighbors, where if, you know, if you buy property in a residential neighborhood, that we are basically guaranteeing you that, you know, that changes that are not to your liking will not take place. And we have a signed paper where people, you know, again, but they're not here right now, so it's kind of hard to, you know, it's kind of hard to take the side of an argument of people who are not here to argue that point. I am, I do believe that what Mr. Bitner has done is very good for the property, for sure. I mean, there's no arguing that, you know. Also, the whole, the whole noise thing, though, and I'm just playing the devil's advocate for people who aren't even here, but, you know, the noise that is created by the diesel repair facility, even though there's other noisier things in that neighborhood, doesn't make the neighborhood any less noisy. I mean, there is such a thing as piling on, which is, you know, I think that what's happening with, at Burton and what's happening at the city yard are somewhat irrelevant if I were living in that neighborhood, and I'm hearing even more noise coming from a diesel repair shop. So, you know, again, I, I find a lack of validity in that discussion. But again, because no one bothered to come here and argue that point on behalf of their neighborhood, I find it impossible to, you know, carry on that discussion. So, you know, I have no choice, then, even, even though I said what I've said about the zoning, et cetera, I still intend to support Mr. Bitner and his development, and of course, the findings of the planning commission, based on the fact that no one came here to argue the other point.
Also, another question.
Commissioner Baker.
Sorry. As far as future, if Mr. Bitner ever decided to sell the property, would the new owners fall into that same category with striking those?
That's correct. This would run with the land, so it would be recorded with the county and should come up in any subsequent title searches.
Let me just say that I did get a phone call from a person that opposed the rezoning, and I did talk to them. They thanked me for listening to them, but they knew how I felt about it, and I know how they felt about it, but ultimately, when you look at the information provided by the administration and the process that's been developed and what has, how they've gone about getting to that process and that final conclusion, there's, the noise levels, and I think I've talked to Mr. before, the, when you look at all the industrial uses in the area, and I'm glad to see Mr. Clare here, who's lived in there for 40 years, I think it's important that when there's no use for a property other than what has been determined, that we allow the use to happen with some conditions, and that, that certainly is what it sounds like what's happening, so. Commissioner Twardy.
Can I ask a question of Kelly Freeman?
Sure. If it's a question, the city manager certainly can.
Yeah, thank you. So my question is, is the diesel shop conducting business in that location currently?
My understanding is that they are currently operating. The administration internally deliberated, and rather than force it to discontinue for a period of time, we elected to take the position that Mr. Bitner could exhaust his remedies, and if, for instance, this action were to fail tonight, then we would pursue the closure of that operation.
Okay, thank you. So that was my first question. Do you happen to know business hours?
I believe during the week, it's the standard, nine or five or eight to five, but then I believe they have Saturday hours as well. Mr. Bitner can eliminate more if necessary.
Okay, thank you. There are a couple of reasons that I ask those questions, is I expect that when people conduct business, it's during the daytime, and you would expect that any daytime business is going to make a certain amount of noise, and even whether it be a grocery store where cars are coming and going in the middle of a community, or some other type of automobile repair office. And as long as they're not trying to repair diesel trucks at midnight, in my mind, he's doing what he should be doing and conducting business on normal business hours. And because the end of Spruce Street is currently closed right now, that's one of my typical pads that I'm going around, and I purposely have been going down that street at least once a day, if not twice a day, during the day, over the last couple of weeks since the last meeting, and I don't hear any noise coming from there. And I'm not living there, but I'm not hearing any excessive noise coming from there that isn't standard business noise. And so I did not receive any phone calls from any of the residents who signed the petition. And so I'm definitely leaning towards any gentleman who wants to improve a property and turn it into a junkyard to what it currently looks like right now, and they're, he's hiring people, and they're conducting proper business. And I say kudos, thank you for cleaning up that property.
And also, Commissioner Baker.
I did get a few phone calls from people that were opposing this as well, and from what I was told, I'm not sure if this is accurate or not, but police were called on July 7th for some loud noise after 5:00 PM. And really, realistically, I just think this could be all resolved as long as, again, business hours, eight to five, and just talking to the neighbors about the noise level and trying to work with them on it. But I just wanted to mention that I did receive.
Okay. Commissioner Bauer.
Just in response to what Commissioner Baker said, if they're conducting business later and making noise that is of an unacceptable level by law, then that's actually not a zoning issue. Then that's, you know, that's.
Noise, yeah.
So, you know, that's not even really so relevant, because there are certain, you know, laws that prohibit that type of activity, regardless of how we rule tonight regarding the zoning or rezoning.
Anyone else? City Manager, anything in addition?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We are into item number six, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under the city manager's report, would provide for the award of a contract for the construction of a trail near the soccer field at Minneapolis Woods. As outlined within the memorandum, sealed bids were solicited through the city's established purchasing policy for the construction of approximately 1,740 feet of aggregate trail at the Minneapolis Woods recreational facility. Mr. Dennis Doherty coordinated the fundraising and material donation efforts for this project, and also prepared the design and specifications. The engineering department prepared the bidding documents and plans in accordance with Mr. Doherty's design. An advertisement was placed in the Sioux News and on the city's website. Bids were opened on August 2nd, with one bid having been received from Benachi Contracting of Sioux St. Marie in the amount of $40,601. At that point, the bid exceeded the available funds for the project, and Mr. Doherty contacted the bidder to review the scope of the project and methods to be employed to reduce the cost to fit within the project budget from funds that have been raised. Benachi Contracting submitted a revised scope and corresponding quote, which is the basis for a deductive change order to be issued simultaneously with the contract award, establishing a project cost of $21,500. The project is currently scheduled to be completed by August 23rd. The city administration has confirmed that Benachi Contracting is the lowest bidder meeting requirements of the city. Mr. Doherty is here tonight, and I believe he's ready to answer any questions of the commission. It's my recommendation that the city commission award a contract to Benachi Contracting for the soccer field trail at Minneapolis Woods and approve the corresponding deductive change order, number one, establishing an award contract amount of $21,500. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary.
So moved the city manager's recommendation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Certainly thank Mr. Dennis Doherty for being here and continuing his involvement in the development of recreational activities within the city of Sioux St. Marie and the surrounding Again, Denny, thank you. Commissioner Collins.
Yeah, the new scope basically gets rid of all the culverts and about 333 tons, it looks like, of the Adriatic 22A. So my question is, is with the revised contract, is it still going to be able to basically meet what we were trying to do?
City Manager, you going to answer that, or Dennis?
I think I'd defer that to Mr. Doherty, if he would be as kind to address the commission.
Evening, yeah. Did you, did you hear the question? Did you hear the question of Commissioner Collins?
We talked to Benachi after we found out the bid was quite high, and went back to what we had done about 15 years ago when we built the linn trails, and decided that they could compact it with their skidster, that's how we did it before, instead of a compactor and bringing in the correct size equipment. That knocked off quite a bit. Found out that we probably could knock out the culvert on the bottom of the hill because it was sloped enough, so if that is a problem after this year, our volunteers will go in and do that. So basically, I think we got a satisfactory bid out of it. I'm happy with it. It's very similar to the original one we did 15 years ago, and we put in about a mile of trail then. So this is pretty straightforward. It's across the soccer field, and it's pretty straight, and, you know, so there's not a lot of variables to worry about on this one.
Thank you. Any other question? Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. I think that, I think you answered my question. So I'm wondering, is the name of the trail called Soccer Field Trail?
Well, on this school property, we're connecting city property, the linn trails, with the school property, so we, we've been calling it the city-school trail system that incorporates both of them. But we still have, of course, the linn trails and the sealed recreation area. But on the soccer field, since the community really can identify where it's at, if you say where you walk in soccer field, they know exactly where it's at. So we kind of elected to use that trail, because it's there.
Okay.
And instead of confusing them about going up onto the sealed recreation area, because this particular area can access from the parking lot at Sioux High.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, yep.
Okay. We have a motion here and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item B, under the city manager's report, would authorize the execution of an agreement with Legends Advertising for advertising at the Puller Community Building. On this matter, I've requested that Director Wires present to the city commission, and if he could, please provide background on this, on this activity.
Okay, thank you. Evening, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. A little bit of background on this Legends Advertising. I look back to 1999, when, when I arrived, or Bud Clark had been doing some things at the Puller, maybe on the Zamboni, a couple of wall signs, that were bringing in a little bit of revenue, and there was not one dashboard sign. So in 1999, we started doing this internally, and we found out quite quickly that it takes a lot of time. You've got to know the business community, you've got to talk, and basically, our program hatched in 1999, and since then, it's kind of, it has grown, and we could not have done it ourselves. 14-plus years Legends Advertising's been working with us. And to give an idea, and that's, in essence, Doug LaPrada and Dave Thomas. So the focused marketing effort started in 1999 to add revenue. Legends Advertising has been successful. To give an idea to the commission, the last four years, the last four years, we've revenueed $83,000, $83,700, just on this alone, into the Puller. And a lot of the businesses, I think most of them are local, and, you know, as this commission knows, we've gone from not allowing alcohol, tobacco, to we have allowed some responsible advertising with alcohol and those types of things, and from party stores to automotive shops, they're all there. Linn Auto, they're there. Waste Management, all the folks that we do business with, with the city, tend to, are very positive outlook, and they tend to want to advertise in the Puller. So it's a very, been a very successful program. I certainly would recommend that we, that the commission consider approving another agreement with them. It is an agreement that's based on one year, but it's also where we can renew it up to four additional years. They've been good to us, and it's been a good program.
Thank you. Any questions of Dan? City Manager?
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Wires. Just one, one additional note, that the city did go through the sealed bid process for soliciting proposals on this, and that Legends Advertising was the sole bidder on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bauer.
So moved that the commission authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Legends Advertising for Puller Community Building advertising services, with a sales percentage of 17.5% of all sold advertising as presented, as they were the low and only bidder, meeting all specifications.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item C, under the city manager's report, would provide for the approval of a second resolution and the scheduling of a hearing on the special assessment role for the West Fourth Avenue Special Assessment, ST-03-17. On this matter, I've requested that City Engineer Visista address the city commission.
Okay, thank you. Evening, Leonard.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As you recall, the, at the last meeting, you held a public hearing of necessity for the West Fourth Avenue Special Assessment Project, and prior to that, you had passed the first resolution, which actually set the date for the public hearing of necessity. It's been a long time, city practice, to introduce the proposed special assessment along with the holding the public hearing of necessity, but in this case, we have several different situations in one, within one project location, and the past practice from the CSO projects of assessing $40 per lineal foot just didn't seem to be the, what would be fair and reasonable for all of the property owners in the, within the project limits. And so we went back and took a look at various ways of applying special assessments, and came up with the recommendation to apply the assessment based on a per-foot basis and based on direct access to West Fourth Avenue. So the recommendation is to charge $20 per lineal foot of frontage on West Fourth Avenue, plus a second component of assessing for the drive approach. So, there are some properties in there that don't have drive approaches, driveways on West Fourth. Some properties have wide-open, currently no really drive approach, but definitely need a drive approach, it's just that it's wide open to the Fourth Avenue, because there's no curb and gutter. And so it was, the recommendation is to just assess it based on square footage of drive approach going out onto West Fourth. The, as you may recall, we had scheduled a public information meeting for July 11th, and no one attended that meeting, but I think we get most attendance because there's a special assessment, and they usually know what the special assessment is, and so people are interested in, more interested in attending. And since the amount of this proposed special assessment was not listed on the information regarding the meeting... regarding the meeting, we did not get any attendance at the meeting. So, if tonight you pass the second resolution adopting, or directing proceeding with the project's special assessment, and scheduling a roll hearing for August 21st, then we will send out the official notice noticing the public hearing for the roll hearing, and also conduct a public information meeting. We've had that scheduled for August 15th here in the city commission chambers. That'd be prior to the public hearing, to address any questions, resolve any issues regarding the measurements, footage, and answer questions about the project. So tonight, I would ask that you adopt the resolution, second resolution ordering the public improvement, and scheduling a public hearing to confirm the special assessment role for 7:00 PM on Monday, August 21st, for the West Fourth Avenue Project, ST zero-three seventeen.
Thank you, Ron. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the work that City Engineer has put into calculating the special assessments. As the commission is aware, special assessments are to be both rational and equitable, and I believe that the calculation of twenty dollars per lineal foot, in this case, meets that need, with each road project being unique. Just a note on the funding, that almost two-thirds of the project cost is being derived from grant funding, approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the Michigan Department of Transportation Small Urban Program, and two hundred thousand dollars from the FHWA federal repurposed funds. So, certainly appreciate the efforts into obtaining those funds, and just a note that approximately under ten percent of the total project costs are derived from special assessments at this time.
Any questions? Commissioner Lynn.
City Manager, I know one property owner, a lot of his property is on a hill which can never be used. Is that why the twenty dollars for front foot? Is that part of the break? Because he can't use the property, nobody can use that property.
Right, thank you for that question, Commissioner. That was a consideration amongst all of the properties in calculating the special assessment of twenty dollars per lineal foot, keeping in mind that there are some fairly expansive properties within the project area, and that the special assessment is to be equitable as well. I don't know if the city engineer wishes to add to that.
No, I would say that I would agree with the city manager Turner's explanation of that. Like I said, there's a variety of different situations within that small project area, and so coming up with a special assessment that was equitable across the board led us to the twenty dollars per lineal foot.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Need a motion, Commissioner Twardy?
Sure. I move that city commission approve the second resolution ordering public improvement and schedule a public hearing to confirm the special assessment role for 7:00 PM on Monday, August 17th, 2017, for West Fourth Avenue, which is Ash Street to Hyde Street, ST dash zero-three dash one-seven.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any additional questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Motion, Gary, thank you. Thank you.
Item D, under the city manager's report, would provide for the approval of a contract with C2AE to provide construction observation services for the West Fourth Avenue and East Spruce Street reconstruction projects. Again, City Engineer Basista.
And this is about, regarding West Fourth Avenue and East Spruce. Both projects have started. If you've been by, they've begun material removals, and tomorrow, they should start installing drain sewers, and they'll start on the water main on East Spruce. We have the same contractor, JNN Construction, out of Gaylord, for both projects. So, and they're both MDOT LET projects, so they're following the same paperwork, contract administration as required by MDOT. So if you get confused, or if you hear me get confused between West Fourth and East Spruce, it's very easy to do, because we have to be very careful, because they're almost identical projects, but they're on opposite sides of town, and they are definitely two separate projects. However, they were both designed by C2AE, and as it's our practice, is to have the design engineer submit the proposal to do the construction engineering services. But because this is MDOT LET projects, engineering, construction engineering services typically consist of this staking, that's the survey, staking out of the roadway, the inspection, the construction engineering, and contract administration. With MDOT, you have to be a certified field manager, office tech, to do the contract administration, that's tracking all the quantities in their program, which generates the pay applications to the contractor, it's tracking, making sure that all the paperwork is in for materials, and so on and so forth. It's usually, it adds a significant amount, I think, just through past experience, to a consultant's fee for service that is not engineering. You know, so you're hiring a consultant to do that work, when, if you have an office tech capable of doing that work, you can save that, that amount of money, and use your consultant for what you really need them for. And so, a few years ago, I had Angie Patterson in my office obtain the certification for field manager, and so this will be our third project that we've done in field manager. So she's doing it for these two projects, West Fourth and East Spruce. And then I'm listed as the engineer of record for the project, so I approve changes and review paperwork and so forth. So I asked C2AE to do the things that we don't have the time or the capabilities to do. That's the construction staking, the inspection, and, third one. We've also hired testing for, testers testing for the density testing and so forth, but C2AE also will be providing construction engineering as needed. If there are design changes that need to be made, then I would go to them, direct them to do the design changes. And it's an unusual, I would say it's a partnership that doesn't always happen between a consultant and the city, but we work very well together, and they're very willing to have us do part of the work, and they're doing part of the work, and we work well in that way. And so they submitted a proposal, and for their services estimated at ninety thousand, three hundred dollars. Again, that's, a majority of that is for the full-time inspection services, estimated five days a week, twelve hours a day, and then the backup engineering, and the staking. And so I recommend a contract to C2AE for the construction observation services for West Spruce, and for West Fourth and East Spruce.
Thank you, Ron. Anything additional, City Manager?
Nothing further. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Collins, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, so how much are we actually saving by having you guys do the work internally? Approximately?
I would guess that it's around ten to fifteen thousand in total.
Okay, thank you.
It's a lot of time and effort, and then, another thing is, when you have the consultant do this work, for some reason, MDOT, when they go to do their audits, if any I is not dotted, or T is not crossed, if a consultant did it, they're much less likely to overlook it than if we did it in-house. They're just more cooperative when it comes to dealing with us in-house versus being done by a consultant. So consultants just have to spend a lot more time working on this than we do.
Let me just say that we're happy to have here with us Randy Scott, who was originally with McNamara Porter and Sheila when we began the combined sewer overflow program in nineteen ninety-three. And Randy now was with C2AE, and certainly knows our system, has been involved in the city a very long time, and just glad to see you here, Randy. But Commissioner Lynn?
City Manager, is C2AE a reputable company to do business with? This is my last shot at Randy taking it. So moved the city manager's and the city engineer's recommendation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any further comments or questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Motion, Gary, thank you.
Item E, under the city manager's report, would provide approval to enter into closed session to discuss trial and/or settlement strategies. As noted within the memory, and the city attorney Canelo would like to consult with the city commission on the Michigan Tax Tribunal case with Cascade X LLC and related trial and settlement strategies in closed session. Section AE of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act specifically states that a public body may meet in a closed session to consult with its attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission enter into closed session in order to discuss trial and settlement strategies as pertaining to the State of Michigan Tax Tribunal case with Cascade X LLC, Michigan Tax Tribunal Order Docket Number seventeen dash zero-zero twenty-two seventy-six, Cascade X LLC, City of Sioux St. Marie, in accordance with Section AE of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. Commissioner Gary.
I would make a motion that we move into closed session in order to discuss trial and/or settlement strategies as outlined by the city manager.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Motion, Gary, thank you.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to item number eight, matters presented by the city commission. Let me start off by just talking a little bit about a couple of events that we occurred here in the city of Sioux St. Marie, again, on the weekend and previous to the weekend, the rendezvous in the Sioux, of which Angie Patterson from our staff was really involved in the year before. They had a hundred and fifty or so applicants, or participants this year. I understand there were almost two hundred, or maybe over two hundred, people camping on the city grounds, and we actually had a battle on the lot, lot property. In conjunction with that, and from all indications, the crowds were really, really turned out. I think this might be the first time in several years that they haven't had any rain drop on them during the encampment, because we've had a couple of times when they were just, I mean, the amount of rain that would occur would be something, you know, that was monumental. And this time, we had sunshine, blue sky, and really nice temps, and then also, so that was very successful. We certainly thank all the folks that helped make that happen on the grounds here at City Hall. Also, downtown days, the DDA and their staff and Sioux events, again, even though the weather wasn't real cooperative, on Friday, it ended up being not very cold, and the rains cleared. I know on Friday, we were there for the ice cream social, was well-attended, and thanks to the city manager helping on that. But, and then Saturday, started right about nine-thirty, ten o'clock, crowds started forming in the car show, and the other activities, and they actually encompassed the other block that normally is free of any of that stuff, like the two-hundred block of Ashman. There were a lot of activities, and again, a lot of work and a lot of volunteer time makes that happen, and as a city and a commission, we certainly appreciate the efforts of those individuals. With that, City Commissioner, Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. So, a couple of questions, I guess, for our city manager. Somebody asked me over the weekend if I had any idea when the new scoreboard was going to be going up at the Polar, and I know that we are here at August 7th, and pretty soon, the ice has to start going down within a couple of weeks, because it does take a couple of weeks to get that done, and I'd love to be able to give them an answer. And so if you have any idea when that scoreboard will start being installed and completed, that would be fantastic.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. The last time that Director Wires and I spoke on this matter, we were aiming for early September. I would defer to him if since that time, any new information has surfaced.
It will be, tomorrow we're meeting. UP Engineers, myself, and Roy Electric are meeting tomorrow to go over this. There was a bit of a delay because of the addendum that we put on at the change order, and I'm suspecting, we don't know, we're hopefully going to have some answers more tomorrow, but I'm suspecting mid-September. The Eagles will be starting first game on September 1st. My reaction to the question is, I would think we may have the scoreboards that we have now in operation, and at some point, we would probably look to bring in the new scoreboard, take the other ones down, and take two down, put one up, and we should be good by mid-September. That's my thinking at this point. We may have more information tomorrow.
Do you have any concern with, after the ice goes down, trying to, because I would assume it's pretty heavy equipment that you've got to bring in there to put that scoreboard up? Is it going to wreck the ice, or?
You know, some of the techniques that we use, we bring our bucket truck in when we want to change the lights, we bring our city bucket truck in. Most likely, what we will do, one of the thought lines, is we would probably make our ice a little thicker, may not be efficient, but we've had trucks come in there, drop oil on the ice, but then we can shave all of that off. It may not be the best skatable ice, but certainly we can somewhat protect the ice that way. But it's, we've never had any issue with any type of equipment that come in our west door. You know, we've brought all kinds of different lifts that come in, and I would suspect that would be the same.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's not the perfect time to do it, but it's, you know...
Yeah, just kind of wanted to have a timeline so that I can give people an answer.
Well, and hopefully tomorrow, we're going to get some very good news, that they've promised that they would get it here, and not before August 31st, so maybe we'll have some good news on that.
Maybe.
We don't know that yet, so...
Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Anyone else? Commissioner Baker?
Just want to mention that the Maloney's Michigan Beer Fest is happening this Saturday, August 12th, from three to nine. It's downtown on Portage Street. We've got eighteen breweries from around the state, over fifty-six amazing beers to try. Half the proceeds go to Jessica Jorgensen and Alex McCready, two young community members that are fighting their second round of cancer, and then the DDA will get the other half as well for future events. So, it's going to be a good time, live music, good food, popcorn, Michigan fair and products, and good beer. So, and if anybody's willing to volunteer, we're still looking for volunteers, you can get ahold of Justine Nepper, Lindsay Ellis through the DDA, or myself at the Maloney's Facebook page.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Bauer?
We did have the first-ever Little Italy Festival a few weeks ago, and I think that was fairly well-attended. The count officially was a little bit over six hundred people throughout the day. The, I know that the Third Annual Proverbial Run was held to benefit St. Mary's School and participation, and that was up forty percent, so I think that was good to piggyback those two events together, and talk to Jason McLeod, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year. And just like, and just like some of the other events that we've talked about within the past ten minutes or so, hopefully it'll grow as the other ones have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lynn?
Your Honor, I would so move that we adjourn this meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor, seeing if I have a saying, aye?
Aye.
Or same sign? We are adjourned, thank you.